Okay, I also have the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regularly, duly and regularly scheduled meeting, the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you.
For Monday, August 16th, 2021, the Jackson Township Planning Board meeting, Mr. Dolan?
Pleasure.
Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Riker?
Here.
Mr. Jozewicki is absent. Mr. Luise?
Yeah.
Ms. Britto is absent. Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Ricardi?
Here.
Mr. Herring?
Yeah.
Mr. Hudak?
Yeah.
Thank you. There is no executive session this morning, uh, this evening. May I have a motion for the payment of voucher recording secretary for this evening, August 16th, 2021, please?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of minutes from July 19th, 2021, the regular meeting. Is everybody okay with that? Any questions, comments, changes? Everybody good? Okay, can I get a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the minutes for July 19th, the executive session. Any changes? Problem? Everybody okay with that? All right, may I have a motion, please?
Both to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, engineering planning matters. Gentlemen, do you have anything to say?
Yes.
Thank you. Legal matters?
None, Mr. Chairman, other than the resolutions.
Okay, so we're gonna start off with that. Our first resolution this evening is block 4201, lots one and two, Dreamview LLC.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's Resolution 2021-17. It's a resolution granting preliminary and final major site plan approval, conditional use approval, and preliminary and final major subdivision approval with certain C variance relief for the lots and blocks in question. It's three commercial properties.
Okay. Anyone care to make a motion?
Um.
Welcome.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yeah.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Next up, we have block 2601, lots 2, 3, 5, and 6, the Macedonia Baptist Church.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is Resolution Number 2021-11A. It's A because as the board will recall, this is the memorialization of the compromise agreement between the board or professionals and the church properties related to the church promising to provide a, for lack of a better term, in layman's terms, a larger initial septic disposal system.
Okay, anyone care to make a motion?
Both to approve.
Second.
Welcome.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming? Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay. Jumping right in, anybody changes? Anybody has anything? All right, jumping right into our applications. First application is block 19501, lot 35, selling insulting investors. Please, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application relating to 31 acre track that, and 20 single-family building lots. We heard testimony at the July 19th meeting, and really it was carried to tonight to address the board's concerns regarding the recreational amenities associated with the multifamily portion of the project, straightening out, straightening out some drafting errors as far as the off-street parking goes, and also to address some landscaping for that recreational area and the multifamily lot. And those were pretty much the last issues that we had. We did not prepare another report. Hopefully, the applicant can address the concerns that the board had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our office has a report dated August 11th. The report deals with the relocation of the affordable units and the parking lot dumpster area recreation that have been added to the plan. Project is still located in the RG2 Regional Growth Zone, which makes this a permitted use or permitted conditional use. I believe in information was added relating to the parking requirements and the ability to provide parking on the site with the revised plan. And if in fact that's been done, we'd ask Mr. Borden to testify for the record regarding that, because I believe it was brought up at the last hearing. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, chairman, on behalf of the applicant. As the professionals indicated, we actually were here both, we were on May, the May meeting, and we were back here in July at the original May hearing. We'd given the majority of the testimony. The board had indicated they would like to see the affordable housing unit possibly moved to another location. We took a break, we went, redesigned that, we moved that location, and we also were able to improve the circulation and parking, as the original lot for the affordable housing was in the front of the development, and there were some concerns about traffic coming and going on the corner. So we come back last time in July, we provided that information. We also showed an area where we could have some playground area for a thought lot. The board, I believe, was receptive to that area and asked us just to come back and show that on the maps, that there was no issues. Additionally, to see how it would move along with the garbage enclosure. And we've done all that, we've submitted that. We have Mr. Borden here to address any of the technical questions. We can't have him, I know he's been sworn in before, but I think we'll have him re sworn.
Mr. Borden, thank you for raising your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, hold truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You've been previously sworn and your credentials accepted regarding this application?
Thank you. I believe your professional summarized it perfectly, as always. We did, we asked to do three things at the July meeting. First was, we had provided an off-street parking lot with eight spaces in it, which meets the residential site improvement standards for parking for the four units, but there were some dimensional errors on the plan, some line work that wasn't drawn correctly, so we had corrected that, showing that in fact those four spaces or four on each side of the parking lot are all nine by eighteen and meet the ordinance. Secondly, we had added some landscaping, some foundation plantings to the front of the affordable units, as well as the required screen plantings around the dumpster. And lastly, we provided a fenced enclosure approximately 2,000 square feet in size, so it's, in my opinion, substantial, with a play structure shown inside, next to the parking area for the affordable, so that would be available for all the residents in the, in the neighborhood.
Before we go on, I guess, Mr. Gerner, we did submit this plan prior, within, prior to 10 days to the board. Just like, I guess, we should mark it. I don't recall what the last item we had listed as a...
Yeah, I didn't prepare a specific exhibit, but we did submit the plans with a revision date of July 27th.
I mean, if it's part of the record, if he's not gonna talk about it other than that, then it doesn't need to be marked.
If we're gonna put the revision date on the record...
July 27th of 2021.
Thank you.
Screen, though?
Unfortunately, I didn't think to email this one to Denise today. She honestly, it was such a, I honestly forgot it was only agenda until about 5:05.
When you submitted it, did you submit it also by PDF?
I believe I did, yes.
Our esteemed board secretary is checking as we speak.
I believe it was, because I printed it myself.
July 27th. I have, actually, well, I have the transnoter where we gave you the many copies. That might be it.
That's right, do not mess with Anthony.
No kidding. Can you zoom in on that, if you don't mind, Anthony? I didn't, I didn't give it my A-class coloring job that you'll see in the next application, but that's the map that we submitted. Yes, I'm speaking this, the word crayon was brought up to me this evening.
Anthony, is it possible to zoom into the top left corner?
In that area right there. Yeah, yeah, that's it. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so you see the foundation plantings in front of the affordable unit here, the parking spaces, which are a bit hard, but the four on each side, and then you have the refuse closure in the center middle back with all the screen plantings around it, and then to the right of that, we have the fenced play enclosure connecting to the sidewalk, and then recall there's sidewalk posed on the both sides of all the streets, and so it's connected by sidewalk, not only to the affordable building, but all of the other units in the project.
So, and Mr. Peters might be able to assist me on this. Just a couple of questions with the relation to the affordable unit to the entirety of the development. Will there be a HOA to maintain, like stormwater and the like?
The intent was to have the stormwater managed by the township with the maintenance fees paid per the ordinance. The affordable housing lot would be owned by an entity that would, that would manage the rents and the maintenance of the parking area and the refuse, et cetera.
And that's...
And they would, and...
Pardon me?
And they would maintain the, the play area as well.
And that's because all the units are, will be sold as in fee simple?
That's correct. All of their market units are fee simple, single-family lots.
And you mentioned, you know, there was a concern about children having to go to the parking lot, that the thought lot, so you mentioned that the thought lot completely enclosed the fence and the gate for that fence on the sidewalk?
Correct, it's very short piece of sidewalk between the play area and the sidewalk along the road, approximately 15 to 20 feet long only.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, this again goes, circles back a little to the affordable unit, so, and I'm not afraid to articulate that as we get more and more involved, we learn things. So, one of the items that I would ask is, as part of resolution compliance, that it be subject to a developer's agreement. The developer's agreement violation, this is really more of a heads-up, but should also be on the record. So, one of the items that the development, the developer's agreement, I am certain, will address, is the interrelation between the manager of the affordable units, you almost know what I'm gonna say, the manager of the affordable units and the municipal manager, you know, the municipal manager, the entirety of the affordable, some double-checking and verification of credentials and that sort of thing. You shouldn't, you're saying, okay, there's really no issue. In fact, you look like you expected that, so that's not...
Well, I think it's a standard condition that we certainly expect.
Okay. Gentlemen? Do you concur with the testimony?
Yeah, no problem. Just one, one quick question. How's handicap handled with the affordables? And maybe that's a general question.
That's an architectural question, I don't know why, I don't, I don't, I don't know what, honestly, what the rules are for handicapped accessibility into the structure, but I, whatever's required will be provided.
Just, you know, it's an odd situation, you know, I'm disabled, need a spot, well, I don't have a spot, but if you provide a spot and nobody comes to, that's, you know, special needs for that, and it's kind of a waste, it's just more of a general question, I'd say, but I agree with testimony.
Chairman, I don't mean to make the meeting last any longer than it needs to, but I don't know if we have these things on the record. Ian, you have a copy of our report dated August 11th, Andy?
I do.
So on page four, the bottom of the bulk standards, we listed minimum accessory structures, there's none proposed with the application?
That's correct.
Okay. With regards to the maximum building height, what was the testimony as it relates to the single families and the multifamilies? Because I don't believe we have architecturals for either.
We're talking two-story structures that would comply with the, with the building height requirements, be two stories.
Okay. On page five, under comment C, the conditional use standards. Number one, would you refresh the board's recollection about sanitary sewer service for the site?
Yes.
And the idea that it's connected to an off-site pump station?
Yes, the site is in the central service area, as is all of the regional growth zone in the pine lanes. Sewer is provided, will be provided to the units. It will connect to a pump station being constructed by another developer, and obviously, one of the standards of the conditional use is public sewer being provided, and until we have evidence of sewer approvals, we can't complete the approvals or construct the project.
Thank you. Under, on same page, under C4, I don't recall if you gave testimony regarding Pine Lands Development Credits, or did you simply indicate how it's gonna go and...
Absolutely, I...
What can be put in an affirmative resolution, so that someone else can pick it up and run with it?
Absolutely, yeah, we have testified to that. Any of the new projects in the Pine Lands Development, or Pine Lands Regional Growth Zone, are required to purchase credits, the ratio was one-quarter credit for every 30% of the market rate homes. So this project is required to purchase 1.5 PDCs, which is six-quarter credits, and it will be, that would be a condition of any approval. We could not obtain a Pine Lands final sign-off approval until my client redeems, purchases, and redeems those credits. And obviously, one of the conditions of this board is that we have to produce a Pine Lands approval or sign-off before your engineer will sign off on the compliance, so that is a...
I want to make sure as we give this to the municipal staff, who's not here this evening, that the payment or the proof of Pine Lands Development Credits, whatever they call that, re...
Redeem.
Redemption, needs to occur prior to filing of the map?
That's correct.
Thank you. On page six, comment C1 under sign, you're not proposing an entry sign for the project at this point?
That's correct, we have no sign proposed.
D2, do you have any idea what the fire truck template was? Doesn't appear that...
Yes, we have the one curve of the road, we called, that had a radius slightly less than the residential site improvement standards. That would be the curve, looking at the map on the, of this area. We, we did have a template of that, I had not resubmitted that back to the fire official, but we have done that template, and certainly their receipt and approval of that template is, is a condition of any approval of this board.
Thank you. Under D3, we talked about it quickly, accessible parking and circulation for affordable housing units. I want to be clear that this board, board's consultants, aren't the Affordable Housing Officer in town, I'm pretty sure it's the building official. My concern is, someone comes in, wants a handicap parking stall, the building official, I'm not sure what they're gonna do, are you guys gonna build a 13-foot wide stall? When you do, like, the next application, we've got, I don't know, however many units?
Yes.
And so it was easy to throw a parking, a handicap parking stall in there. Here, we've got a plan that does not provide a handicap parking stall. So, yes, I understand, someone puts a sign up, you can't park there. I'm not trying to make it harder, I'm trying to make it compliant.
I understand.
Somewhere down the line, if someone builds this, whoever the successor and title is who tries to get a seal on the lot is gonna say, well, the planning board approved it without handicap parking. So, something in the resolution affirmatively stating that if required or if necessary, I don't know, you greenbank it, you put a, you really can't stone it, it's handicap accessible. I don't know if someone goes out there with black paint and paints over the handicap accessible, or goes out and restripes, maybe you just stripe a 13-foot stall...
Right.
Instead of an eight-foot stall?
I understand.
Don't make it handicap accessible unless a handicap accessible need arises, and then someone goes out there and paints it and puts a sign back up.
I agree with that, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure one of the parking spaces, one of those eight is 13 feet wide and striped it, as you described, that's a, that's a great suggestion.
Thanks. Same page, E, the de minimis exception, you guys will have to at least send something to the state indicating the request. It was for the centerline radius, I believe?
Yes, that's correct, and we would do that, yes.
Page seven, H1, under the landscape buffer along Grawtown, is that a waiver request that y'all are making?
No, we would, we would provide that.
Okay. On page eight, under Affordable Housing, Section K, not that the board has the ability to grant relief from it, but you agree to whatever affordable housing requirements affect this property?
Yes, no, we agreed to those, I believe this will be the subject of the agreement that Mr. Gerner had made reference to.
And under L1, as a condition of the approval, you'll have to go back and forth with the Pine Lands Commission in town.
That's correct.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Question? At this time, I would open it up to public comment, and one who cares to speak about this application can step up to the microphone. Favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving along. Any last comments? Okay? Good? Care to make a motion?
Would you approve this, if you'd like?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yeah.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have block 19403, lots 24 through 27, RG2 Associates. We have attorney here. Allegedly?
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Good evening. Thank you, have a seat. It's not... Thank you.
John Junko, John Junko, Giudano Howard and Cecil, here on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As indicated, this is an application for final major site plan. Board, on November 7th, 2020, memorialized a resolution granted preliminary site plan. The resolution indicates that the board needed or was hesitant to grant the final approval, and asked the applicant to come back with some more detail regarding the multifamily units, landscaping, recreational amenities, items that are very similar to the, to the prior application. The applicant has submitted revised plans that show this, this area, and based on the preliminary approval that was previously granted, that's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a report dated September 30th, 2020. Properties located in the RG2 Zone where it is a permitted use. There was quite a history going back probably to 2011 on the approval process for the property. It was only recently, in the last year or so, that the affordable housing units came to play on the property, so asked the applicant to give some specific testimony about where we were along in the approval process from 2019, 2011, 2019 or 20, and what we're doing now, and the reasons or protocol for doing that, and then provide some testimony with regards to the reports that are in evidence.
Okay. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, this is an application for the final major site plan improvement for the affordable component of the RG2 development, and that includes 36 affordable housing units within the nine two-story buildings. Under, I think they already spoke about the resolution, we're prepared to address the issues that were raised by the board in conjunction with the affordable housing. Mr. Borden prepared the plans, with your permission, I'll call him as our witness, offer him as an expert in the field of civil design and planning, and ask to present the testimony in support of our request for final approval.
Board, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Since this is a new application, and I respectfully, I don't know, I've never heard you talk about civil design as an expertise, but if you can lay out your expertise to the chairman's voir dire?
Yes, certainly. Ian Borden, president of Professional Design Services since 2000, or since 1996, graduated Rutgers University, bachelor's science degree in 1982, been working in the planning and engineering field since 1983, including fellows reading associates, Mazer Zosinski, and since 1996 with PDS, Licensed Professional Planner in the state of New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Ian, did you or others under your direction prepare the exhibits and the applications submitted to this board in conjunction with the 36 affordable units?
I did.
And for that purpose, did you also, familiar with the overall subdivision approval, the municipal ordinances in the master plan?
Of course.
And in that regard, could you just describe the location and zoning of the property? Indicate the overall tract and the particular portion of that that will be for the board tonight?
Yes, I think I have provided the board with four premarked exhibits. I see A1 is, is on the board, what you see...
Excuse me one second. Has that been marked into evidence, or do we need to move it into evidence? Because I'll, I'll ask a general question. Ian, the four exhibits that you just mentioned were prepared by you or others under your direction and submitted to this board for evidence before them this evening?
Yes.
I'm gonna ask that those four exhibits be entered into evidence as we call upon them?
I would say without objection, Mr. Chairman, subject to your approval.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So, as, as noted by Mr. Flea, we're talking the site, obviously, the RG2 sites in the RG2 Zone, as we had just discussed in the last application, the subdivision that is RG2 has been granted preliminary and final approval, those are still valid, and as described by your professionals, we had received a preliminary site plan approval last fall for the affordable components, and A1 is the site plan that was granted preliminary approval. We have, Grawtown Road is on the bottom of the project here, and we have this, these are internal roads to the subdivision, and then we created this affordable housing courtyard, thank you, of nine four-unit buildings, again, permitted by the ordinance, there was no variances, the, the units, their spacing, the setback, the parking, all complied with the ordinance. And what we were asked to do, as a condition of the preliminary approval, as Mr. Flea stated, was to provide a recreation area and, and to work on some landscaping. So that brings us to A2, if you don't mind, Anthony. And, and this is where my crayon skills come in. But it gets, the point is made. In other words, what, comparing to the previous exhibit, as was suggested at that preliminary hearing, we, we kept, the, the number of buildings did not change, and the parking did not change. What we simply did was spread the buildings to create this, this area in the bottom left or the northwest corner of the site to create a recreation area. That recreation area is a fenced area. For purposes of this submittal, we just called it a recre, a lawn recreation area. Please appreciate the fact that we made this submittal for this hearing in March, so since then, I think we've talked a lot, like in the last application, about improvement... So since then, I think we've talked a lot, like in the last application, about improvements and things that are done. But at the time that we submitted this, we didn't have the benefit of that, those conversations. So we simply showed a lawn area. For purposes of this testimony, though, I have two more exhibits or at least one more exhibit to help in that. Uh, as we've discussed in other projects, we've heard loud and clear that, that, uh, certainly for the number of units here in, uh, a larger number, uh, thirty-six units. Uh, that what we propose is two, uh, tot play or two play areas, uh, one for tot of two to five. And what I'd like to do is we, what you see in the exhibit is the, the light green is obviously the grass. And you have a central courtyard inside the, uh, parking off the cul-de-sac. And, uh, we'd like to place a, uh, tot lot for, uh, young, uh, children, two through five in there, a fenced area, uh, with that. And then we have, uh, we'd like to place a tot lot for, uh, slightly older kids aged five to twelve within the, the, uh, the recreation area itself. Again, that's over seven thousand square feet, so it's quite substantial in size. And that top, it could easily accommodate that player while also maintaining a large field for just general play. And if you go to A three, Anthony. We just provided, what you have on top, it looked pretty much the similar, but you can see the height is different and the slides are different. But the top would be a play structure for age two to five. And the bottom would be a play structure for five through twelve. So those are the play structures that we propose to, uh, to place. And then maybe just to get, finish up with the last exhibit, A four. It was discussed about providing an elevation of the affordable units. Here you have, uh, the units that are, uh, four units. Yeah, one up, one down. You see the entry doors. We have the, uh, foundation plantings. Uh, so that's, uh, what we're proposing for the affordable units. Again, two-story high, uh, less than the thirty-five-foot maximum height requirement.
Ian, this building would comply with all the municipal standards with regard to dimensions, size and height?
Yes.
It, in conjunction with this plan, did you also, uh, propose a lighting plan?
Yeah, we have a lighting plan, uh, that complies with the ordinance around the parking lot.
Right. And it, it meets all the standards and it was submitted?
Yes, that was, again, that, that hasn't changed since the preliminary approval. All the, uh, the, the, the parking, the sight lighting, the refuse, uh, those were all, uh, in the preliminary approval. Those have not changed.
And, uh, you had indicated you were gonna, or that you were looking at the landscaping for some supplemental planning?
Yes, if you go back to A two. Uh, we have shade trees all around the property throughout the, inside the courtyard, plus we have evergreen screen plantings, not required by the ordinance, but, uh, proposed along, uh, the northern boundary and along the Grawtown Road frontage. And there will be foundation plantings along each of the, each of the units as well. They have not been shown. They'll be, uh, they will be shown.
So you're showing them on the rendering as an exhibit, but they're not yet on the full plan?
That's correct.
But you would put the, how would you go about getting them on the plans?
It would be consistent to how, what shows on the rendering.
Resolution compliance?
Absolutely.
The board grants approval?
I'm sorry, to be clear. A, A two doesn't appear to show foundation plan.
That's correct. I'm saying we're going to provide them consistent with A four. A four shows the foundation.
Thank you.
Yes. We discussed previously, um, are all these buildings going to look exactly the same?
No, that was just a sample of one.
All right, because I, I think it would add to the architectural interest to have maybe some bricks, some stones, some, you know, some variety, so people coming in late didn't go to the wrong house.
We're required to do that in any project.
Good.
Uh, the township has a look, what we call a look-alike ordinance that says that on one side of the street or within two hundred feet, they can't have the same appearance.
Excellent.
So that, that ordinance has been effect as long as I've been working in town for thirty years.
This is just one example.
That's correct.
One, I do like the, um, uh, porch area. I think that adds some architectural interest.
Thank you.
And protection. Good.
Right, Ian, um, does this portion of the application request any variances?
No.
Have you reviewed the engineering letter prepared by, uh, Doug Clea?
I have.
Do you have any comments?
No, we would comply, as we would comply with the Remington Vernick letter that is September of two thousand and twenty, that's part of the preliminary rule.
So you're sad, you can, you can satisfy all the remaining issues in both of those letters?
Yes.
And you would do that via, uh, the resubmission for plan, uh, resolution compliance?
That's correct.
Okay. All other aspects of the plan remain as previously approved and submitted?
That's correct.
Okay. I have another direct questions, Mr. Chairman.
Affordable housing. How you're going to make these, uh, buildings energy efficient so that these people, like they're getting the cooling costs so manageable and lighting and all that?
Uh, certainly, uh, besides aesthetically being, uh, consistent with the aesthetics of the neighborhood, the, uh, materials inside and the, uh, energy efficiency would be comparable. So I'm sure they'll, they'll be using the fluorescent fixtures and the, uh, uh, basically what I would call when I, I, I don't know if the towns, the term is outdated or not, but when I built my, my house in town here, ten-plus years ago, the term energy star was what we used. I think these would be energy star, meaning the, the appropriately, uh, uh, insulation, lighting, uh, HVAC systems.
Gentlemen, uh, energy star, is that, uh, the standard that he can apply with or follow?
It's not necessarily a civil engineering term. It has to do with what you see on appliances you buy at Lowe's or Home Depot.
Exactly.
And it probably is more pertinent to the building department, but it's not a site civil engineering.
That's correct.
I understand the, the premise and the idea, but, you know, until he puts solar panels on the roof of the building on the site plan drawing.
No, we're not asking for that.
As a reasonable condition of the approval, we could ask that appliances similar to the market rate units be energy efficient?
Yes, all the low E glass, yes.
Low E glass, uh, you know, maybe heat-up insulation.
Yes.
Things that make them.
Though, those are standard practices and they're certainly, those same practices would be employed in the affordable units, the same as they would be in the market units.
Okay, and, and secondly, um, Mr. Gardner raised a good point to me that, you know, I, it's great that you guys put in this recreational area and so forth, uh, but you're going to have a lot of, uh, kids on bicycles and so forth. Is there anything we can do, uh, put some bicycle racks in or something? Because they're going to be strewn all over the place.
Well, certainly we can do that, yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may pin that down a little, within the recreation area, is that where you would anticipate seeing these?
No.
No, I think scattered throughout.
Scattered throughout the, this project or throughout the development?
Throughout the development, I think, uh, bike racks.
I think that's fine. Uh, we have the, the spaces between the buildings, just thinking out loud, we could put a bicycle rack between every, uh, building. Right, you know, off the front sidewalk.
So if I may follow up and, and to be fair to Mr. Borden, I'm particularly talking about the development off of, um, uh, Commonor Boulevard. Right after the old Rex Hut, you know, that development back there, which is generally two, three bedrooms. And unfortunately, having kids my kids' age also living there, it's difficult to maneuver with these kids from like eleven to fourteen. So the more storage opportunities you build into the buildings themselves, and this is my, or, uh, probably should have articulated this beforehand. The better the development will be. And quite frankly, the more, the easier it'll be to maintain for the ultimate, uh, company, some things like bike rack, storage for, for balls and things like that. In, in a, as a part of the design element, probably.
Okay, I understand.
Easy and, and easy enough to do, simple, easy fixes. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
I see the distance between about ten feet when you push the buildings together. I don't have a scale, but.
Distance, trying to remember, I believe the distance is about twenty feet.
Is it?
Yeah. At a minimum. Actually, I'm going to look up. Yeah, they might be, um, you're right, Marty, they, I didn't bring a full-size map with me, but they might be fifteen, they might be fifteen. I'm looking at the older map. We have moved them slightly closer together to create the recreation area. So I, I would say they're, at the minimum, fifteen feet apart.
Thank you.
Brief question, it may or may not be relevant, so it'll be to our professionals. Is there any discussion how the administrative agent role would work on this application? Is this a separate, is there any market related to the, mixed with the affordable and, uh, would there be any conversation at this board or not at this board of whether any or any nine percent or four percent tax credit saw it with a separate developer on the project or is that not related to the application? Is that not reviewed?
Well, I would think that we could ask the applicant what their intention is. It's their site plan application. They're looking for an affirmative resolution from the board. It's a fair question to be asked, whether or not we can answer it at the planning board, maybe a different answer, but I think it's a fair question.
If, if I understood the question, you're asking how they, the units would be managed for rents and et cetera?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, the, just like the last application, this lot, this is one lot that has all, uh, nine buildings on it. So this lot would be owned by, uh, uh, an entity that would manage the rentals in accordance with the UHAC standards, in accordance with the, uh, affordable housing planner and attorney for the township. So similar to the last application, we would have an affordable housing agreement with the township council. And, and it would be managed in accordance with the terms of that agreement and the UHAC standards.
And likewise, that's how you would obtain the tenants through the township and the administrator proper and the official administrator?
That's correct.
So, so through, through the chairman, following up on Mr. Wall's questions, like they're actually a little bit more pointed. I'll start from the larger one, though, is you certainly agree, again, not only having an agreement with the affordable housing council, but a developer's agreement to address
Yes.
These management issues and the integration of the management, both with the balance of the site and with the municipal, uh, administrator.
Yes.
Yeah. The second follow-up question, related questions to that, do you now at least perceive, uh, at any point applying for any, uh, tax credits in order to develop the affordable units and/or do you have an intention at this point to apply to the municipality for a, uh, municipal pilot, understanding that that pilot is totally discretionary on the part of the municipality?
Yes, uh, we'll of course follow up with that. We recognize the township has no obligation. We would of course, uh, look for that benefit if it's possible, available.
Is there any application pending in front of HMFA or neither or no, on the non-competitive or competitive funding?
I, I didn't really hear.
No.
Is there a plan to integrate or phase the construction of these units with the rest of the project?
Yeah, they, they will follow the UHAC, uh, standards.
Is there a point in time where this project in, as a practical matter, will be developed by two separate entities? Builder A would build market rate units and builder B would be, build affordable housing units? Or is this project meant to be one complete application?
It's intended to be one complete application.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up to you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, I promise I, I'd like to get home too. For the record, we, sometimes we, in our haste to put forward the application, we miss some of the things that Sean and Doug and I need for resolutions. Gentlemen, is this, we had noted that this application may actually be an amended final major subdivision approval, along with preliminary and final site plan approval. I just want to make sure we call it what it is and get it in your resolution correctly.
Mr. Peters, I believe this was, uh, a final only because the preliminary had been amended and agreed to these conditions. So in fact, these plans should be amended preliminary and final.
Amended preliminary and final.
Major subdivision and site plan.
And site plan.
Right.
I kept, I didn't hear site plan out of either of these gentlemen's mouths.
Reading, reading the, reading resolution twenty twenty dash twenty, uh, that resolution did amend the subdivision to eliminate some of the market lots to create, uh, these affordable lots. So that, that bookkeeping, I believe, was already.
I just want to make sure you get it right, lest there be an appeal on it.
I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I had.
Okay. Okay, I was about to open it up to, uh, public comment. Do you want to, can you speak about this application? Could step up to the microphone?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the board to approve.
Seeing no less, seeing no one come forward, I make a motion to close for the sentence.
Thank you.
Aye, go.
Well, surprisingly, and I know this will, you weren't expecting it, but I'm going to ask you to approve this application. This follows up the prior hearing where we went through a significant, uh, discussion about this particular component of the plan. And this plan represents what, uh, the input that was received at that meeting and subsequently from your professionals to, uh, develop this. It should fit in. It certainly meets the, uh, UHAC standards. It meets the affordable housing requirements. I'd ask the board to grant approval to this amendment, amended, uh, to this final approval.
Any questions, comments? No? We do appreciate you taking this board twice on one of the highlights. Okay. Anyone care to make a motion? Would you approve that situation?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Haring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you really? Okay. Next up, we have block one two three zero one, lot thirteen, BME Property Two LLC.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chairman. An application for minor site plan approval, the applicant proposes to convert an existing animal care facility to an eighteen-hundred-square-foot, uh, professional office building. Site improvements are, are minimal. Um, there's an existing gravel surface that we're now, we're going to, um, delineate, uh, nine parking spaces, um, including a handicap, um, area and, um, provide an access ramp to the, um, to the building. That's, and, and a ground sign. That's pretty much the extent of the improvements. Um, so engineering-wise, um, we really didn't have all that much to review. Concerned that as an animal care facility, a gravel surface, you know, parking lot, the act or the existing driveways might be adequate, but if we move this to a, a professional office, um, the site improvements might be, might be lacking. So I, um, I would like the applicant to, um, address that issue, um, as a primary concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a report dated August fourth of this year. Projects located in the NC neighborhood commercial zone. There was a previously approved use for pet grooming and cage free boarding and doggy daycare business with a provision to allow one employee to stay in the house overnight as needed. The proposed uses, um, appear to be in compliance with the NC zone requirements. A business office is a permitted use. And a professional office is a permitted use. We asked the applicant to restate those for the record. We'd also note that the property is in the conservation overlay zone, which requires, uh, the letter of interpretation. And we ask the applicant to address the reports that are in evidence, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, turning behalf of the applicant. As the professionals have indicated, the existing, we're here for an amended site plan, the existing building, it's approximately eighteen-hundred square feet, a little less, seventeen, ninety, or give or take. The previous use was, was for an animal care facility. The applicant is looking to convert that to office space, I believe it's, the plans show, I think it was three internal offices and a conference room. We will comply with the parking, which is, I believe, nine parking spaces. This is, we are not seeking any variances, but for, there is an existing shed that has a rear yard setback for the accessory use of, of the shed, of, I believe it's seven feet or fifteen feet required. Everything else, we are complying, complying with all other bulk standards. I have Glenn Lines here to address all testimony and all technical items. Again, at this time, I have Mr. Lines sworn in.
Mr. Lines, thank you for raising your right hand, do you sound like you swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truthful truth and nothing but the truth. Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, then through the chairman, briefly your credentials? And, and I'm sorry, Mr. Lines, it's probably on, but you really have to, but that actually allows me to remind the board, I've been told when the board members and all of us up here speak, you have to try to lean into the mic, so that you get picked up. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Glenn Lines, professional engineer, professional planner, I am owner of New Lines LLC Engineering and Survey in Lakewood, New Jersey. I've been practicing civil engineer for thirty years. Licensed in New Jersey in planning and engineering. Thank you.
Mr. Lines, we can also just mark any of the exhibits we're going to be, we're going to be referencing as you walk us through the application.
The first would be A1, which is the cover sheet for the plans. Again, we're proposing to convert the existing house from a animal care facility to professional and business offices. It's an existing building with gravel parking lot and a concrete area which will be striped as a handicap space. Nine, nine spaces are required, and we are providing those nine spaces. The the parking lot is currently gravel, we were requesting to keep it as such, but between comments in the letter and request from the fire, fire commissioners to stripe the fire lane, it appears that paving of the parking lot will be necessary. Other than that, I, not to cut things short, but we're, we've gone through the letters, we don't have any objection really to any of the comments. There's, there is an existing unfinished basement which will not be used, it'll remain as is. Then we're proposing business and professional offices with nine parking spaces, I would believe that will be enough for the proposed layout of the building. Frontage is on Bennett's Mill Road, provide concrete driveway, brings out to the, out to Bennett's Mill Road. Other than that, I really don't, other, we're making very, very few changes to the property, so there really isn't a lot to testify about, I apologize.
Mr. Lines, do you agree with my opening statement that the existing building itself for the professional office, commercial use does not require any variances and we meet all bulk standards?
That's correct, the only bulk variance we need is for the one shed, which is a rear setback variance.
Right, and the justification for that shed, for that variance to, to remain?
It's, it's an existing shed on concrete block foundation, and it's, it's, there's no one behind us, this, the property behind us is vacant, I believe it's open space because of some wetlands, buffer area, so we're, it won't impact any of the neighbors if we leave it where it is. Thank you. Other than that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I've got a question for Mr. Riker, actually. Are there any environmental concerns about an animal facility being transferred into a business? Needs to be addressed?
So, you just mentioned a, oh, take my own advice, huh? You just mentioned paving for parking. Is that going to change what this looks like?
No, we're just, the existing gravel area will be paved, we're not going to pave any more than is already disturbed with the gravel parking area.
Does that do anything with the stormwater runoff?
It, it'll be less than any of the requirements that, that require stormwater management.
Thank you.
I think there has to be some form of stormwater management, it's surely not going to raise to the level of a major development where we start talking about water quality and, you know, storms and everything like that, but I think something, a simple recharge trench around the edge of the pavement would, would probably suffice, but I'd like to see the analysis before, before we finally make the final call. But just to follow up, paving, no curbing?
No curbing. And we would agree, should the board approve the application, we have no objection to working with the board's engineers during measures, resolution compliance to do some kind of a recharge to their satisfaction.
The basement area, that will be stipulated that it will not be improved?
Yes, it's not improved and, and it's not improved, not improved today and in no intention. Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Let me ask a follow-up on that, I thought, what does that mean? Do you use it for storage now?
Right now, I believe it's.
Utilities down there, what?
I believe there probably are some utilities, but I don't foresee anything other than maybe some cleaning equipment or storage of some papers, but I believe that the board's request is talking about actual desks down there, people down there, that, that is not what we're seeking, and we would agree as a condition that we will not seek to improve the basement, other than storage of the materials.
How are you going to mitigate garbage? I don't see a dumpster? Or an enclosure?
We don't anticipate a very large amount of trash and recycling being corrected, created. Probably just do that with cans at the curb side.
So, I can, for fear of having some knowledge about this, having an office about this size that happens to be on Bennett's Mills Road, not within two hundred feet, otherwise I would recuse myself. You will have to have a dumpster. And because it's private hauling, so there, to follow Mr. Fleming's advice, you probably should create some specific area.
That's fine, the, the property is an acre in size, we have sufficient room to place a dumpster in a reasonable area that, again, we'll work with your engineers, if they have a suggestion, it's an area they like to see that, we're, we have no objection.
Well, the reason I brought it up is because we haven't been allowing them in the front. So it's going to need to go to the rear structure, which is going to go to my follow-up question, is you're giving us no access to the rear of the building. So when you give us access to rear of the building for a dumpster, you might want to give us rear access to rear of the building for fire suppression.
We, we could probably do that on the west side of the building. We already have a handicap ramp on the east side, so. That's necessary. Yes.
Thank you.
I, I apologize, I didn't hear that.
No, if, if it's since it's necessary to have access to the back, I believe we could fit that in on the, on the west side or the right side of the building, and that would also help take care of the solid waste removal.
And that's where the dumpster would be?
Yes.
Thank you, sorry, I was having trouble here.
That's okay.
Anyone else?
How about some landscaping?
Be happy to take any, any, any recommendations you have, we'll work with you to provide some landscaping for the building.
That's fine, you know, invested in this project, you know, the aesthetic value of, you know, some type of landscaping around the base of the sign, some foundation plantings, the trash area, we'll probably need some type of landscape screening, just a suggestion.
Yeah, Mr. Girders reminded me. When you come here, be prepared and have, you know, teeth swathed and eyes dotted and landscape is planned, and that sets a basic assess. I appreciate you working with Mr. Riker, but going forward, let's be sure to address those items.
Understood.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions here now?
Yes, sir. All right.
I know, we were going to request a waiver that there, there's no curb sidewalk in the area. That's correct.
What are we going to make this building a little more presentable and perfect?
We're doing anything.
As far as the aesthetic, I mean, it's going to be cleaned up a little bit, it's all mostly internal renovations, but we will agree to do some landscaping and to spruce it up, and that's not the, what you're looking to hear, but it's, it's a small eighteen, less than eighteen-hundred-square-foot building.
I agree, you know, it's, I, I'll be a vague, I'm just running down a list, you know, talking about not using a big, for example, like that, parking park, rain guard, walk, walk, traffic, or rear exit for fire, curbside, I'm at six items, I'm wondering why we're not done yet. And I'm asking, how are we going to think about the project? Because there's a good lot of project applied, applied to the project, there's not a whole lot to look at, I understand the nature, but you got to show up with stuff. So, I don't think I want to, I couldn't say anything to look at, other than what I've been looking at for the past couple of months. Oh, what's there?
So, Mr. Pfeffer, I guess he is expanding on my views and the board's views, that when applicants come, they need to be ready with life. And what I mean is that they have to have the forethought and they have to look ahead at, and cover all their bases, you know, landscape, like lighting plan. I mean, you're doing a project here, gave us interior plans, there's no nothing said about the outside. And that's, that's standard, so.
And the thought, just, Mr. Chairman, those thoughts and that articulation, I just want to make it clear for the record, that's supported by the goals of the master plan. So the board is not reaching beyond what the master plan talks about and trying to create these corridors. And Bennett's Mills, Brewers Bridge to some extent, certainly Commodore County Line and the like, so if I, and if I overstep where, where I'm at, I think certainly the board, and of course, they'll articulate themselves, will be in accord with the professionals, but I think what the board is also trying to do is articulate to protect its professionals, so the professionals have an idea of what to expect. And Mr. Pfeffer, you and I have done this before, I would just, and maybe, Mr. Riker, this may be the proper place to try this, I'm putting this idea out, the board would have to accept it, our professionals, is I, based on this initial, based on the fact that this is at some level a change of use of an existing structure, et cetera, the, a, a compromise that legally I could recommend and support would be when you make these changes to also protect our professionals, is that you come back simply for an administrative approval of some of these enhancements and additions. You don't require notice in that, in that mind, but it does protect our professionals as well to ensure that, and you, quite frankly, and your client, because then the board will have the final administrative say over how it articulates what this view is going to be.
So, along those same lines, we've also done this in the past, a little bit different. Okay, should the board, voting the affirmative for the application with all the conditions that we're discussing, prior to the board voting on the actual resolution, we provide this stuff to the professionals so that we don't have to come back in six months and bombard the board with a whole new, a new application, it's just administrative. But this way, if, if they're not happy, if you're not happy, or the professionals aren't happy, you don't vote on the resolution, and we have to still work on it.
Well, I guess my only point to that is how quickly can you get revised plans in for review?
So again, so, just to discuss the few items that we have, and again, I'm before the board fairly often, and I've come in with, with renderings and pictures and everything. I don't want the board to think that we just threw this together and said we're coming in. As far as the applicant's request was to start with gravel, when we got the, the comments from the fire commissioners, we understood, we had some discussions, so we understood, we're going to have to concede and we're going to have to pave that, we, that's fine. It was our understanding as far as garbage, that we'll be able, because it was a small office, we'll be able to bring cans, we understand that's not the case. We have no objection, we will do the dumpster. As far as the plantings, like I said, I know you don't like the answer, but to us, it was a small building that they were just converting, they were kind of using the existing use in going forward, we understand, we have no objection to adding some landscaping, so I, I don't want the board to think that we just came in, gave you nothing, and then we're just going to say, yeah, we'll throw it all in, and we'll make someone happy, we'll get away with as little as possible. We thought this application was a, a complete application in terms of what we were given.
I, I just, again, and I don't want to belabor it because all the ones the board's called, not mine either, I just make this suggestion, I think, I don't think that the board necessarily disagrees with your perception of how you presented it. I, I would just say in this particular case, to allow a, and the board has to agree with this, obviously memorialize this so that you can start perfecting the application, and then as you put the other pieces together, can list it as a matter for discussion and administrative approval, and I, I think your client would be better served in that process than that, then you control the timing better, that way.
I will take your sage advice.
Respectfully, I'm going to disagree with our council. I don't think this is complete enough to move on. We have so many different differentiations that what we're going to end up with, what's on that piece of paper, are going to have nothing to do with each other. Except for the actual building envelope, there's nothing the same, it's going to be paved, it's going to have pavement on the side of the building, it's going to have stormwater management. There's so many things that are different, that I don't think we could vote on this tonight, that's my opinion.
I'm also looking at lighting. We don't know, we don't know what this, and I don't know if you know, what this is being used for, but offices often work after dark. People are coming in to park after dark, but is there a lighting plan? I don't see one.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Pfeffer, I think you're going to need some kind of checklist or something to the clients, you know, before you talk to these meetings that, you know. to compliance, you know, before you talk to these meetings that, you know, everything is checked off, that you have everything there, ready to go, that we don't have to go through this big rigmarole of examining this. It should be presented.
Yes, sir. I don't believe we did. Okay. All right. With that said, still going to open it up to a couple of comments. Anyone here to speak about this application? Step up to the microphone? Hey, no one? Boy, I want to go. Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, Mr. Pfeffer, I, I believe you got the kiss of the board.
We'll request to carry to a later date so we can address the board's concerns.
Next year, the 18th. Yeah. So listen, Mr. Gertner brings up a good point. Our October 18th meeting, although we have a number of applications on there, I mean, this is just going to be a review of everything we discussed. Would you be prepared to?
Yes.
You would?
Yes.
Good.
Just, just so I can run off the things the board were looking for, lighting plan, landscaping plan, paving plan with whatever runoff it's going to, they're going to have, garbage location, statement of operations. Didn't miss anything. And, and sprucing up of.
Yeah. So elevation of outside.
Yeah.
Sprucing up. Anything else that we're missing? Signing?
Yeah, I don't think we were seeking any, we'll double check. No problem.
Yeah. Well, so, yes, I will. We'll need a motion to carry this to the, to the October.
Eighteen, 2021 meeting without the need for the notice. The applicant, we, having leave time to that meeting.
Okay. Sorry, more seconds? Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yep.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Haring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. All in favor?
I oppose.
Thank you so much.
I oppose. You want to stay one?